Everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of January 31st, 2023. I'm going to call the meeting to order this evening, and tonight, our sole agenda item is our budget public hearing. I would like to start by taking a roll call vote to open the public hearing on the superintendent recommended budget for fiscal year 2024. School committee members, you do have in your receipt the slideshow for the presentation this evening. I am going to take roll call votes for all of our votes this evening, so can I please have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkla?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
And Ms. Bollanese?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous, the public hearing is opened, and I would like to invite Superintendent Dr. Hackett to present to us on the FY24 recommended budget.
So, good evening, everybody. This should look very familiar to you. These are the same slides as you saw last night, with the exception of 30 is now 31, to get the date correct. So, we'll go through the slides, and I think, as you did last night, if you have questions along the way on the slides, I think it's probably the easiest way to handle it, so that we're not flipping back to previous slides. Just to start, to share or reshare our three district goals for this year, and as we go through this budget presentation, and some of the both things that we have included, and also items that we have included in terms of priorities that are not currently included in the budget, hopefully you will see these goals and the bullets underneath them threaded throughout. So, if you remember, way back on January 19th, we had brought forward to you a preliminary draft budget, a needs-based budget. The current budget, the year that we're in right now, FY23, was a 4.73% increase over FY22. So, building from FY23, we had contractual obligations, we had out-of-district tuition, we had required programmatic changes, which was the .4 FTE Mandarin at the high school, and then we had, at that time, taken the number for some anticipated staff attrition, elementary enrollment, retirement. At that point, we were at $63,631.66 for a total increase of 4.48%. Last night, we presented to you a budget that came in at 4.15%. The contractual increases, all of the lines being very similar to the last slide that I just showed, with the exception that we added an athletic trainer. That is a partial amount of money for the athletic trainer. We currently treat that as a contracted service, and we talked about the fact that the high school last, this current year, and last year, the last couple of years, has had a hard time even getting contracted services for athletic training position. At one time, this was part of our budget several years ago, pre-pandemic. So, this amount of money would allow us to make this a full-time role within the school system, would be our employee, and we would not need to contract the service anymore. Obviously, consistency is important in that role. You can see, once again, the .4 FTE for Mandarin at the high school is a continuation of the Mandarin program that you have implemented, you implemented several years ago. We have students at the high school right now who are in the pathway, and this provides the one additional year that they will need to continue with Mandarin at the high school. And then, the general education transportation contract, that is a known number. We had, you had gone out to bid and actually signed a contract for general education, transportation, and this is a known increase of $30,450. This number does not have anything to do with Lynch Transportation to Parkers, which we'll talk about a little bit later on in the slides. And we bumped up the anticipated elementary attrition and retirement. We are reducing three sections at the elementary level through this budget, and that anticipated savings right now is $352,391, for the total of $63.4 million, or 4.15%. So, any questions so far, before I continue to drone on? Nope? Okay, alright. This is an overview of the rolled out, I mean, line item budget in cost centers, as you have seen yearly, and if, Peter, if you are on board, could you walk us through this?
I am, and I'm glad to. So, the budget as presented here really shows three, three, and four budgets, and the reason we did this is because, as you know, when we other people...
Can you turn that off?
Peter, can you hold on for a second? Yeah? We're having volume issues here.
Oh, okay.
Would it be on? Yeah, it's gotta be on the... Can you say hi?
Me?
Yeah, it is on my computer, alright. You know what, learn something every day. Alright, sorry, if you could start over.
Sure, over. The slide shows three different snapshots of the budget to our FY23, and one of FY24 that we're asking to take a look at tonight. The first box that are left shows the FY23 budget as originally voted last year, and the reason that that's specified is because we have a reserve budget to the central office line item, that was for collective bargaining. Now that we've settled our contract, what we've done is we've realized allocated actual staff in position based on the expectancy and other differential center, and done a projected FY23 budget, which is the middle box that you're seeing. And then, on the box at the right, which is labeled FY24, is our proposed budget for FY24, again, laid out in the 12 different costs and the organization, and then the central office, special ed, athletics, pathology, and physical services. And in each case, we've shown the actual staffing for FY23, which is the two columns from the front to the right, and then show you the double differential, which is a dollar jump comparing FY24 to the FY22 budget, and then percentage change. So, that's how we start with this.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Row? Okay, thank you, Peter.
Yeah, you're on.
So, we, in the budget, this is, these two positions are carried, as was shown on the previous slide. The athletic trainer, which we do have a draft, i.e. draft job description of, and I've already mentioned the fact that had been contracted services for many years, at one point was covered by an in-house staff member who was at McCall. We have had inconsistent coverage with our contracted services. They are suffering in the same way that we are, in terms of trying to find staff, although I will say, we're in a much better situation than we were last year, but they struggle to find the staffing, so they have a hard time issuing out a trainer that's consistent. And obviously, it's good to have the same person, so that they know our athletes, they know our families, and that is one advantage of the athletic trainer position coming on board as part of our staff. And then, you can see, just contracted expense was 49,500. The 1785 allows us to take this position at full-time. We may not spend all that money, we would post the position and go through the process, so that is a placeholder in some respects. The .4 FTE in Mandarin is already described. We've implemented a middle school program several years ago, students are coming, are in the high school, they've come up through the high school the last couple of years, and as you know, you added to this position for the current year that we're in, so this is an additional add that would allow students who are currently in the program to continue. Looking at out-of-district special education costs, we wanted to show, as we've talked about several times, we're pulling this slide for several reasons, but I want to start by saying that our, as we've worked through this, these numbers, the increases are not in the budget, we are carrying a fairly minimal increase in the general fund going from '23 to '24. You can see the difference, and that was broken out in the slide above. But, we are projecting, based on current and projected spending for this year, and placements for this year, we are projecting, going into next year, that we'll have between $190,000 and $530,000 gap. The most, the most challenging part of this right now, and we've built this on, is a 14% increase to tuition costs. That was, that information was given to us in the fall by the rate-setting commission. Whether that number comes in at 14% or not is to be, yet to be seen. We won't know that information likely until later on this spring, even possibly after you've, we've already gone to town meeting for the budget. So, we've shown you the range, based on our current numbers, our current, and our projected numbers for placements and costs, but that range is built off of also a 14% increase. So, there's a lot for us that we don't know right now. My feeling is, my recommendation would be that moving into next year, that we apply SRR2 funding to cover this, whatever the gap may be. If it's $190,000, we'd cover that, if it's $531, we would, we would cover a part of that. We currently have $320,000, so, in SRR2, 328,963, to be exact. So, and it is, it is an appropriate expenditure out of the SRR funding, because it is pandemic-related. So, I say that on this slide, because we've not carried this in the actual budget, we are carrying a increase of $284,550, so it would not be able to cover, which you'll see reflected here in this number. We are anticipating a little bit of a bump on federal funding, and we know this is a known number, we currently have $1.8 million in circuit breaker funding, which is a pretty significant increase over the current year that we're in, so that's very helpful. If we didn't have that, we would be, obviously, in a different situation. So, that would be my recommendation, that we don't, that we don't put this number in the budget, that we cover any gap with SRR funding, and then we continue to try to address the, what is currently a structural gap, as we go through the next couple of fiscal years. Any questions on this slide?
That's good.
Okay. So, we brought forward to you five prioritized initiatives, or in, they happen to be all personnel-related. We then went through and prioritized those. As such, we have bulleted out some of the points around each one of these positions. The 1.0 social-emotional position at McCall Middle School, we are, we've definitely seen an uptick in students who are struggling, who are dysregulated, and trying to make sure that we're making appropriate accommodations with the classrooms, and also providing teachers with professional development, in terms of how to manage some of those behaviors. But, the social-emotional position goes broader than that, as you know, and covers other, other content as well, and we currently have one social-emotional position at the middle school, with the numbers that we have, we feel that this is a needed position. We are still coming out of, well, depending on the definition of coming out of the pandemic, we are still feeling the effects of the pandemic, is probably a better way to say it, and we just feel this is an important position for our students at that level. We also, for the second priority, we are recommending a special programs and services coordinator, that title is a placeholder, with the primary goal of really overseeing our in-district programs, maximizing our in-district special education options for students. We've done a great job over the previous years, building capacity with our in-district programs at our buildings, so that we would have the options for students and programs available, so that we wouldn't have to have students going out of district. The pandemic kind of flipped things on us, and we are not alone in that. Every other district that, well, many other districts are having the same challenge and the same issue, not only higher referral rates, higher service needs, but also out-of-district placements that are happening. So, we really feel this is an important position. It was recommended in the, in the LBLD program review, that you had contracted the year prior to me getting here, and we don't, though, however, think that this position should be just for LBLD. We believe this position would have, should have oversight of all district-wide special education programs, so that we can get some consistency, develop entry and exit criteria, calibrate our staff, calibrate the student referral process, because it's, as it stands right now, with a district-wide program that's in another building, the communication isn't as clear, so for one person to be able to have oversight, and to be able to see the connections, and really try to make sure that we are appropriately placing our resources is important. We, you know, it's, I don't want to go to the extent to say this position's going to save money, but I think what this position will do is make our programs more clear to staff, more clear to parents, so that we are making sure that everyone understands the options that are available, and the position might also be recommending some additional options that might strengthen any one of our in-district programs. And not, I'm not going to read down through each one of these three, but we, at ranked number three, four, and five, a school psychologist. Right now, the placeholder is for a district-wide position. We have certainly seen an increase in evaluations, we're anticipating some additional evaluation pressure in the fall of the upcoming school year. The program, this position would support emerging needs within buildings, including managing referrals, district-wide program supports, so we, while we think it's a priority, we do not believe it's the same level of priority as options one, number one and two. We also might have the ability to manage some of this, this, what would probably be somewhat of a surge in the fall, with some different options in terms of funding and how we can get evaluations done. The next one, at ranked number four, is the elementary social studies coordinator, and I will let Dr. Alarama talk about that a little bit.
So, we have, over the past few years, started to put in the same level, not the same, but closer to the same level of support at the elementary that we have at the secondary level. It's so key that we need to do it there, so we have consistent experiences for our students across the five schools, so as they feed into McCall, they focus on the same standards, they have the same skills as they're going forward. We've been very successful, thank you, to move with some of the content areas, and the last area we really need to focus on now is the social studies, which also touches with our social justice and our social emotional pieces. As the social studies standards have shifted, and as there's a heavier emphasis on civics, there's a lot of work to be done with that. So, currently, our one instructional coach that we have for the five elementary schools is also focusing on trying to do that work across the elementary schools as well, and we really need some consistency happening there.
So, in the final ranking, we have the McCall Middle School Instructional Coach. We, as Jen just pointed out, we have an instructional coach, one for the elementary level. We currently have one in McCall, and currently, in terms of the level of priority, we feel that that position is not as urgent as certainly as the first two. So, does anyone have any questions on these priorities? Okay. We include this slide at our own risk. I'm learning, but I keep coming back to it.
If this is the slide, it was going to be gone today.
No, I couldn't help myself. And the reason why we show this slide is because this, there is a number attached to the swing space here at Parkers for our Lynch students for next year. This is a two-year, if everything goes well with construction for the new Lynch school, this is a two-year issue for us to try to figure out how to manage. So, we have been in contact, Andrew's been working hard with the transportation company, we've looked at a variety of options, and all but to just say to you that it is, the estimates we have right now, in two scenarios, adding additional buses to existing elementary tiers, for students more than two miles from Parkers is about $300,000. If we're going to provide that for all Lynch students, it's about almost $600,000. That particular option is less likely for us, but we don't want to take it off the table at this point in time, we still have more work to do with the transportation company, and as we are looking at our routing. The second real option is to add a separate tier for Lynch to Parkers only, and you can see the range for that. So, if we cover, as we are legally mandated to do, obligated to do, students, we need to offer transportation for students who are more than two miles from Parkers, a little under $200,000, and then, if we were to do it for all students, it's a little under $400,000. So, I, that, that, these numbers are not included in the budget, we don't have final numbers yet, it will be weeks before we really are able to nail this down, but I just want to make you, as a committee, aware, once again, that this is a number that we're going to have to figure out, and it's not currently being carried in the budget.
But, to be clear, Dr. Hackett, this is a two-time number, so this is a number that will carry for two years, and then...
Yes, I thought I had said that, but maybe I didn't.
Just put it in.
I've done, this is my second time doing this, so yes.
Just reiterate it.
Well, it is an FY24 discussion, not a 2425.
Right.
So, I'll give it a nap.
So, just moving on, this is our updated projection for enrollment, this is based on our October 1 count, October 1, 2022 count, that we, that we provide to the state. You can see the last row on this is a projection for '23-'24, utilizing the same methodology that you have used in the past, primarily, which is just cohort survival model. This has not taken into consideration any potential impacts from the residential projects that are, that will be coming online for us. We are estimating 280 kindergarten students at this time for this production, projection, so you can see how that plays out across the grade levels. And the next slide just shows that same, those same numbers, just as a line graph over time by, by grade span. So, the top one, blue, is K through 5. The middle one, which is gray, is 9 through 12, and the bottom one is middle school, 6 through 8, and you can see that middle school is tapering off slightly, the high school has kind of bumped up a little bit, is pretty steady, actually, since 1920, but down over, over that period, we are, we are down some. And then, you can see that there's a gradual decline in the K through 5 enrollment at this point in time. This slide just shows the October 22 enrollment, this is October 1 count, these numbers have already changed, and I'll show you that in a second, by school. And then, these are the projections that we're using for, to build this budget. We have, in '22, in the '21-'22 school year, we had 110 elementary sections across the district. You can see what those average class sizes look like. In the current year that we're in, we have 103 sections, we budgeted for 107, that was part of the approved budget, town meeting approved budget, we had 107 sections at that time. Over the course of the spring and through the summer, we realized that the enrollment projections were not coming in as high as we had projected, and we were pretty clear about the fact that we did not know what the enrollment was going to look like, that this was going to be somewhat of a baseline year, to really see where the numbers came in at. So, we took the opportunity to use some attrition, all attrition, reduced by four elementary sections, and we used those resources to, to improve, to enhance our special education programming, hire, hire additional special education staff, to provide what we knew were services that students had been identified for last year. Dr. Alarama worked with Pam Gerard, school by school, grade by grade, student by student, to review IEPs and really try to get a handle on what level of services we needed to provide, and found that we were not going to have enough special education support staff, or staff, to be able to manage the identified needs and goals of the, of IEPs. So, that was, the good news was that we did not have to come back to you and ask for additional funding, or additional positions to cover the needs of our, of our students, and we were able to take advantage of the, of the, both of the attrition, and lower than projected enrollments as we went into the school year. Going into s, school year '24, this current budget proposes 100 sections, that, that's the number that we have built this budget off of. You can see the 280 projected kindergarten enrollment, where 250, we opened October 1 at 251, and then you can see the sections across the grade levels and the resulting class sizes. And so, when we looked, again, we look regularly at the, at our enrollment, but as of yesterday, we are up 30 students since October 1, and interestingly, and not insignificantly, we're up 17 students at the kindergarten level. We haven't really had the opportunity to kind of track down why that is, or where that's from, I find it to be a little bit odd. I would have to assume it's likely move-ins, because if, if you are a resident, you have a five-year-old, you have a kindergarten-age student, and you had placed them in a private setting, it'd be unlikely that you would bring them in after October 1. So, the presumption right now is that these are students who have moved in this year. This is just a quick snapshot of grades 6 through 8 and 9 through 12, from the school year '22, through our projected enrollment for, for next school year. We, as you can see, we're, you know, we're down a little bit, but not, not a level that really can allow us to talk about any reductions in staffing or adjustments to program. And then, overall, as we, we know, we have the River Street project and the Cambridge Street project coming online. These are numbers that were put together by the Donahue Institute several years ago, they were updated in 2020. These are the ranges for projected enrollment growth for K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. We've taken our projected enrollment in the left-hand column for next year, and then we've just done, the far-right-hand side, as you can see, we've just provided a low end and a high-end range, based on, based on the ranges of both, both of the projects. Clearly, they're not all going to come in at the same time, we don't know where they're going to land, we, you know, it's a lot left to be seen, but we want to make sure that we continue to put this out, that we do anticipate that we're going to have an impact, there will be an impact from both of these projects coming online, which we anticipate to be sometime mid-next year. So, we believe right now, at the staffing levels I shared with you here, that we are positioned to be able to manage that at the K through 5 level. We know we can handle it, and 6 through 12, obviously, a little bit is a different issue at the 6 through 12 level because of schedules, but we're, we're confident and comfortable that we can manage that growth at that level. And then, at the elementary level, especially with the fact that we're going to be bringing the Lynch Elementary School students over here to Parkers next year, there's a lot in flux, and I think in some ways, it provides us with a little bit more flexibility to manage any, if there are any kind of significant bumps as a result of either those two projects, or any additional bumps of move-ins that we've experienced already this year. So, with that, I'm happy to take any additional questions the committee might have.
Can I just?
Hi, Ms. Bollanese.
Oh, I was just wondering, with the .4 addition for the Mandarin teacher, over the next few years, do we anticipate that as those students advance to the next grade and the next grade, will we need to add more?
Can you help me, Dr. Alarama, are they going to be juniors next year, or seniors?
So, we may have to, depending on how far they go, like, will they take AP, how far will they go with it, and what will the enrollment continue to be? Because the section numbers may change for, like, who's in Mandarin 2, who's in Mandarin, so, yeah, it's definitely possible, yes.
And this .4 add brings that position to .8?
Mr. Nixon?
So, I had, I had a question unrelated to that, but I just, if I may, I'll ask a clarifying question. So, this .4 is for... So this .4 is for Mandarin 2 for the fall?
No, Mandarin 3.
Mandarin 3. Okay. I'll come back to Mandarin in a few minutes. Your, one of your closing slides shows the average class size, you know, on a grade-level basis throughout the district, Dr. Hackett. So if you can pull, if you can find that slide...
I can get my computer to respond.
And I, I don't expect you to have like, numbers to write the front of your head on this, but given, given that, I feel like you, you've talked previously about, about the challenges and opportunities to accommodate students coming from River, because that's in the Lynch District. We've talked about that before. Cambridge, though, is a VO district project. Do, do the average class, do the class sizes at VO, do you feel similarly comfortable? I mean, that's obviously one-fifth of all our elementary schools. Any chance, any tipping points there with needing to hire a teacher if kids should come in, let's say, more like K2 versus 35? Or do you feel pretty good about where the class sizes are within the VO building? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yes, it does, yeah. We have more room to absorb at the K2, K3 level than we do at the 4, 5 level.
Okay. Because I'm asking from a staffing point of view, with of course, the understanding that once the Lynch Project is finished, we're going to pick up two classrooms because we have two preschools over there now, right? And though they weren't really designed for that, but we'll have that space available if we continue to see enrollment growth.
I think we will be challenged if we had, had to add much more than two sections just by space constraints. And to your point, when, when Lynch is completed, two classrooms of pre-K will free up, but that's something that would, we would need to take into consideration.
Do you want to hear my Mandarin comments now, or can I just save them for later?
However you'd like to do it.
Whenever you'd like to make them.
So I appreciate everybody putting up with me last night with my tech because I had to be at home with a sick kiddo. It would be helpful for me to just understand that I heard it correctly. As it stands right now, the budget does not include any investment for that on-ramp for Mandarin 1 at the high school. But I think I also heard that there was a willingness to put it on the schedule of courses for the high school. If we were to do that, and there's interest, and I'm not sure what that "in" is, but I mean, we have some sections of Mandarin 2 that are as small as seven or eight kids. So my question, I suppose, would be if seven or eight or nine kids say, "I'm interested", if, if the dollars aren't in the budget, then what? So I'm, I just would like some clarity if I heard that right, that we're willing to put it on the schedule of courses. If there is interest, then what do we do if we don't have the resources in the budget?
We would come back to you with a recommendation at that point. We would want to, we have seven or eight, and we had this conversation some last night. I personally believe and professionally believe we've made a commitment to Mandarin. Part of that commitment is, one, recognizing that Mandarin will not be the most enrolled, heaviest-enrolled world language that we have. We've built a program that has started from the middle school into the high school, and when you begin building a program, sometimes there is a cost to that, that, kind of a startup cost, that you would make exceptions for enrollment numbers in, in sections to be able to continue to feed the program. So I would not be terribly worried at this point about an additional .2 FTE from a budget perspective. I think we could probably manage that, but again, we have a lot of things that are unknown right now. So hopefully, some of these things will break our way. We won't be at 14% tuition for special education. We might have some additional information on retirements or some potential room there, and we would come back to you with a recommendation.
And hopefully, the governor's budget will be out by then too, because that's not due until March 1st.
So I was, a couple of things I just sort of, I struggle with. When we voted to do this, you know, three years ago, I think, we were, we were committed to bring, substantially expanding our world language program, and it was not insignificant. We had a lot of debate. Some people around this table will remember, well, what language should it be? And there was a lot of calculus around it being Mandarin and Y. And as I shared with you last night, we kind of, we have this on-ramp in sixth grade, and that makes sense. I think it was nine-ish years ago, Dr. Ellen Emma, we made an investment at the high school? We, we tried this. And I, I think this is akin to sort of trying to build a campfire, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. You get a spark, you get an ember, but it doesn't sort of catch. And that happened at the high school. I think we learned from our mistake. But there was interest at the high school, and we were teaching Mandarin, but we had, I think, a .2 or .4 at the time. It was very hard to find somebody, you know, with that few FTE to teach. And I think that was even part of the, part of the sort of environment with, within which we lost that teacher, because it's just, it's so difficult to sort of keep somebody. But we, we still stuck with it with those kids and made substantial investments in an online program through Middlebury College. So those kids who started it, you know, we supported them, but when we lost that physical teacher, we did lose some of those kids. But I, I just wanted to state, for those who weren't aware, we've sort of done this experiment before, and kids showed up. And we were teaching Mandarin 1 at the high school. And I, I feel like what's great about what we've done this time is, we've taken another shot at building the campfire in sixth grade, and it's starting. And this is an opportunity to throw a few more twigs on the fire. You know, when you think you've got it going, at what point do you make the right investment? But I say that, I mean, appreciating what I think you and Dr. Ellen Emma were just saying is, you know, it, it, it's also about supporting those kids who are, who are stepping up into the high school, who are already taking it. So there is that potential for Mandarin 4, or AP, or what have you. I just struggle with where the entrance to that program is, and if we're really sort of fully executing on what we were committing to, you know, before your time, of course. But I envisioned, you know, by year three or year four, we would be making some additional investment. So that's sort of very much in my mind right now. Yeah.
And you said last night, I think in quoting Dr. Ellen Emma, that the resource is for all the kids. So if we have a whole bunch of first graders move in all at VO, and we need an additional position to cover that, then we'll be coming back to you and asking for that position to be implemented and with a plan to how we would actually cover that within the budget. I don't see it to be dissimilar from, from the conversation around Mandarin 1. If we have the need for it, then we would be coming back to you with a request. I think the challenge with, with the position and the program is that if we are to offer a entry-level Mandarin at the high school next year for students who are interested, then they ask, also have to go through the scheduling process of trying to figure out whether they can work that into their schedule. So if they come out the end of that, and they're committed enough to want to take it, that they have perhaps made some other decisions in their schedule of dropping some things so they can work that into their period 2, wherever it would land, I, I do think we have, I, I do think we should make the commitment. The question is, you know, is it one kid? I, I don't know if you have a class for one kid. Is it two? Is it three? Is it five? And I think that would have to be part of the conversation if we have to come back to you. But it is in the program of studies. Students can sign up for it. We also have included French 1 in the program of studies. We'll see what those numbers look like. And as we go through the scheduling process, we'll be able to, once we start to be able to commit schedules, then we'll have a better handle on the resources that are needed.
Well, what struck me, my last comment would just be, I really was appreciative that Charlie was at the table last night, and he kind of gave us the student perspective, which is, it matters a lot what your peers think. What is that class like? What's that, I don't know if he said what that's, what's that teacher like, but I'm sure that's part of the conversation. So that just to me speaks to how it, it can take some time. You, you got to go into it with the expectation, you're going to do it for two or three years, and really let it kind of take root. But I also don't want to feel like I'm in Groundhog Day, and this is a conversation that, you know, I have again a year from now.
Neither do we, Mr. Nixon.
I'm offended by that.
You forewarned us last night that we may be hearing about it again in another fiscal year, so.
Dr. Ellen.
And just to think about the world language program just in general. So if our numbers aren't rising by any significant, significant number at the high school, and students, more students choose Mandarin, we will naturally recapture through attrition other languages, FTEs from other languages. So there will naturally be less students in Spanish, or Italian, or French, if more in Mandarin. So that will shift and change each year too, based on student enrollment and programs. Because if there's no rise in numbers of students, we don't really need more world language FTEs, just where they are may shift based on what students select for their programs.
It's a good point.
Happy to answer any other questions?
Any other questions about this or anything else in the budget? We did a really nice job last night, I think, of digging deep into this. If there's any follow-up anybody had, otherwise. Everybody else said? Okay. Then I would like to invite any members of the audience who would like to come forward and make a statement. I do see Ms. Arizari in the audience, who is the co-chair. Why don't you join us down there, Ms. Arizari, with where you have the microphone?
You're going to have to reach for the microphone, though.
Yeah.
You definitely want to grab that, so they can hear you.
Co-chair of the Special Education PAC?
The microphone looks exhausted.
Ms. Arizari, may I ask, are you here on your own behalf, or on behalf of the PAC?
I am on, here on behalf of the, the Special Education PAC. So yeah, I'm Stacy Arizari, and I'm the current co-chair of the Winchester Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and I do speak on the board's behalf. So I wanted to thank the committee and Dr. Hackett and Ms. Geary for your continued support of children with special needs in Winchester and their families, and of the elected officers of the WIPAC. During a recent WIPAC meeting, we heard from members of the school committee, actually, maybe just one member of the school committee, and administration, and you previewed your budget priorities. And WIPAC stands in support of the FY2024 budget as proposed. And while the budget may be negotiated in various town committees in terms of line items and fiscal impact, each of these positions, the prioritized, prioritized positions represents our values and the priority we place on supporting our children with special needs. WIPAC strongly supports the addition of a special programs and services coordinator. We feel that this position is a culmination of years of discussing how best to support and continue to develop core in-district programming and its staff, both during the school year and the summer, in order to provide the high-quality, inclusive, and accessible education that our children deserve right here in town. More recently, the Language-Based Learning Disabilities Program Review recommended addition of this position. WIPAC is continuing to review, consider, and evaluate the recommendations that came out of that review, but with this prioritized initiative, we're encouraged. Second, we also strongly support additional social-emotional staff at the middle school. Our students' increased mental health challenges affects every component of their daily lives, including their capacity to access an education. Last year, WIPAC was grateful to have collaborated with this committee and the administration on revisions to the middle school's bullying policy. And while our focus was on changes to the policy, it became apparent during that process that increased social-emotional support is a critical component of addressing mental health issues, which thereby strengthens the anti-bullying environment at the middle school. Further, mental health support is even more needed post-pandemic, while many children still struggle with the repercussions of the changes that COVID brought to their daily routines, access to resources, and their emotional health. Finally, WIPAC supports the addition of a full-time school psychologist. The school psychologists are critical to the identification, evaluation, and support of our children with special needs. And if you've ever had to schedule an IEP meeting, including a school psychologist, then you know how very, very busy they all are and how much this position is critically needed. Again, thank you to the committee, thank you to the administration for continuing to support these priorities and for the opportunity to speak here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I should let you go first.
Mr. Vernalia. I also see you in the audience.
Thank you so much. My name is Brian Vernalia. I live at 19 Sergeant Road. I'm a parent of two kids, one who recently graduated and one who is a junior. So the budget that you're thinking about right now will be the last budget that directly impacts my family. I'm also a member of the Finance Committee, but I want to be clear that what I'm speaking about tonight is my own opinion. Finance Committee probably wouldn't really be very happy about me asking for you to spend more money, but that's what I'm here tonight to, to suggest. I was watching your meeting last night, and as I'm off to do, I started talking back to the screen, and remarkably, you didn't talk back to me. And I was thinking back to when we added Mandarin, and I was on the committee at the time, with serving with some of you, and I thought this was a great way to expand beyond simply teaching Western Romance languages in our schools. If you think about the languages, when I was a student, we had German as well, but we basically just have Romance languages in Winchester. And we did spend some time discussing about what to choose, and we chose Mandarin. And I don't think I fully understood that that meant, if you took Mandarin, the only way you could take it is if you started in sixth grade. And if you missed that one, one on-ramp, you were, you were essentially done. And so I was watching last night as you were talking about the option of, well, expanding Mandarin so that students could continue taking who are already doing it, which of course is, should be obvious, but I'm, I'm glad that you're doing it. But then the opportunity to expand it so that students in not just ninth grade, but 10th, 11th, and 12th, I should say, that I took Italian 1 as a 12th grader. So students other than ninth graders may take Mandarin. Seems like something that's worth doing. You may not get as many students that first year as you'd like, but I, I was struck by how you were trying to decide whether you should do it, which was, who signed up for it? And our kids are smart. They know if a course isn't being offered, they're not going to sign up for it. They're going to sign up for courses that are offered. And if it's not offered and no one takes it, then more kids aren't going to sign up for it. Sort of a cycle. You aren't, I, I, I was thinking about this. It's like going to the movie theater and saying, "I want to see Jaws." And they said, "Well, no one bought tickets for Jaws. We're not offering it." Well, of course, they're not offering it, because no one, it's not being offered. No one's going to try to buy tickets. No one is going to sign up for Mandarin 1, or not enough, unless you commit to offering it and tell the world, and tell the students that you're offering Mandarin 1. So it's inexpensive in a 60-plus million-dollar budget to add $14,000, which would have no additional benefits beyond that, because the benefits are already, it's a .8 is a full, full-time position, well, it's a full-benefits position. So I think you need to give it a couple of years. I don't think you can look at it, and if you get four students, you might say, "That's not enough." But if you get four students and they like it, you might get five or six students the next year. I, I just think this, the intent was not to have this be a one-and-done in sixth grade. So I really hope that you will consider adding in, again, $14,000, I think it's 14 and change, and make this a possibility. So, and if you don't do it this year, I don't, it's not clear that anything will be different next year or the year after. We're basically just saying that Mandarin is sixth grade, or you can't ever do it. So, thank you very much, and though I didn't say it upfront, I really appreciate all that you guys do, and whatever you decide on this, you do so much good work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks for your comments. And now I would like to give any of the committee members who would have anything they would like to add in response to anything they've heard, an opportunity to speak. Then I think we, Mr. Nixon?
Well, I, would you like a motion to close the public hearing?
That's what I was just going to ask for.
And so we go to a regular meeting for further discussion and vote on the FY24 budget?
I would like that.
Then that was my motion.
You were one step ahead of me.
Okay.
Roll call vote, Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcock?
Aye.
Ms. Bolinesa?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous, and the public hearing is closed. And with that, we move into our regular meeting.
Can I just ask, Dr. Hackett, can you pull one of your first couple of slides up that just shows your recommended budget? With the numbers, there you go. Thank you. Perfect.
Any comment from any of the committee members?
I know there wasn't much time, but was, was there any conversation today with the Mandarin teacher in regards to whether they would want to be?
No.
Okay.
I didn't see the gesture. Was that a yes or a no?
It was a no.
Oh.
And I did also hear a consensus from this committee last night that if we were to add... that if we were to add Mandarin One, it would not just be the cost of that we would need to add in, but we did indicate an interest in making French One available as well.
Yes.
So if the committee, and I also heard what Dr. Ellen Emma said, that with a decrease in student population at the high school, it does open room up in other language courses. So we may be able to go up to a full-time Mandarin teacher if needed, because students taking Mandarin or French One may then not be taking Italian or Latin One. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
Or Spanish.
Or Spanish, thank you.
Can I ask about that? Just, I imagine that in any class size, there's probably a, or maybe the question is, is there? I don't know. It strikes me that you need a critical mass of people to stop taking a course. You know, you can't, it can't be like, oh, three or four people. You know, we went down from 20 to 17, and therefore, we can take two tenths of that teacher away.
Yep.
But you probably have to lose a section, or how does that work, I guess?
So, I mean, we don't even have to have a decrease in student enrollment. It's just whenever you add another language, so, for instance, right, we've added this, we'll call it a strand, of Mandarin, right? So you start with maybe two sections in the first year of it, and I think we had something like 33 students. So that's 33 students that aren't in other languages. And then when you go to your second year, there's maybe another 30 students. Now there's 63 students that aren't in other languages. And when you go to your third year, there's another 30 students that. So eventually, what happens is that's a part of an FTE for another language where there's not the same enrollment that there used to be. So you may, then, when somebody who's already part-time, we don't need to expand that, and/or someone retires, and you only now need to hire a point six Spanish, the case may be, for another language. I'm not saying any of that will hap, again, following the students. We don't know where they'll land or what they'll choose.
In overall, the other languages, certainly for Spanish, we're offering more than one section of Spanish Two.
Oh, many, 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 yeah.
Right, so you would then collapse, essentially reduce a section of Spanish Two, collapse students in, because you don't have the need for additional section, because of class sizes.
But that's a point two of someone else.
And if I could just add to that, and that's why Anna is looking at, attorney, the director of world language, is looking at applicants. She's looking for those that are, have dual language, so that this move can be fluid. Some years, it's better than others for that, but that's the goal.
That's helpful, so they could teach two sections of this and one section of that, or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, in my head, I'll just say, I'm still struggling with this conversation. I think there are, Mr. Vinalia, you raised some interesting points that I thought about. I guess last night, I was feeling better with, you know, we have the course catalog. If people sign up, they will come, but sort of the overall investment. And I don't have a set conclusion on this at this point in the conversation, but it does feel like some of the, you know, the sizes of the classes and where you move the resources work themselves out, but it's probably a lagging workout that may happen a year or two later. And given the uniqueness of an non-Western language and the investment of getting it going, you know, it's really something to think about and the, you know, the relative costs and stuff, given the budget. So I'm still processing all of this, but it's interesting to understand that. Thank you.
Given that you, Mr. Marhoney, manage this every year, probably in every department, based on student enrollment, classes, students choose, I, I'm wondering about the opposite question of that. If we funded this at a full-time Mandarin teacher, would it be possible that is overfunded then next year as well? Would it be possible that we have too much time in world language that, are you following what I'm saying? Like, if we don't have the students, if we funded it full-time, the students don't come, then we have a full-time Mandarin teacher that might not be able to teach French, Spanish, or Italian?
Likely wouldn't, for the same reasons why we're trying to grow Mandarin.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so we would normally make the sections smaller, but sometimes when the sections are so small, it doesn't, you don't, you don't, even though less students always sounds good in a class, it's not really good for collaboration and for practicing language. So we might choose not to do that, and depending on who the person is in the position, they can teach point two outside of their area. It wouldn't probably be another language, but I don't know how creative we could get with something else for them to do when it's world language. Yeah, I mean, don't get us wrong. I mean, we would love, we would like this. We would also like point two for French, because we would like French One, too, because last time, the students signed up for more French One than Mandarin One for the high school. So we'd also like that. I mean, we'd like a lot of things, so we're not in disagreement.
She has a list.
I guess I, I was gonna say, and I'm sure it's not just world language either, that we would like point two. So I guess I'm asking, my question is, in a situation like this, is it better to budget early and over-budget for you and for staffing? Or is it better to come back and make those changes? And it may not just be in world language for us, I guess, is what I'm thinking, too. Well, it may not just be Mandarin, it may be French if we offer French One. Is it better to come back if we need extra staffing once students have enrolled in classes?
I think that's a Dr. Hackett question, then.
Oh, sure.
I think that's what you said earlier, that we would come back, right? If there was, I mean, and that's, last year is a good example of, right? What we needed to do with special ed, we had, we needed to increase our special ed.
Right.
So making adjustments when movements, it is a little trickier with program, because that's a very specialized skill set.
And I think this is a unique situation. We have one teacher delivering the entire program.
Okay.
So to your question, if we over-staff this position, in my opinion, we would look to offer another section of two or three, because we still get in the same situation with our students that if they can't fit that Mandarin Three in their schedule and their Mandarin Two, and now if we had two sections of Mandarin Two, understanding the numbers could be small, that gives them two opportunities within the schedule to take it.
Right.
So it helps to relieve the pressure of the schedule. We don't have that issue in other world languages, because we have more staff and we have more sections. So this, we're just in a unique position. And I think, you know, as was commented earlier, you do, this is a program that we're building. You know, and I don't know that we'll ever get to a point where we need another teacher for Mandarin, but it's, you know, we will never know that if we don't continue. And we've made a significant investment in it. So I'm not necessarily advocating either way, because I'm comfortable in coming back to you if, in fact, we do need the position of the point two. But I hear and understand the points that have been made around, you know, if not now, why not now? And do we signal to students that we're not committed to it, because they know we don't have the staff? Possibly. But I think if we make a commitment at this table now, and you make a commitment that you would, as you have done with other things, funded if the students are there, then, you know, you have shown already, you've increased this position over time. You've already shown a commitment to doing that. So it isn't a lot of money, understood. It would be within our priorities. So it's not like we're being, you know, it's being asked. It's something entirely different that we haven't even talked about. So, you know, it's your decision.
Can I make a quick observation? So Ms. Bergstrom was using an expression, "over-budget." Your question, Dr. Ellen Emma, was, what happens if we over-budget? And as you were asking the question, the distinction I was making in my mind is, budgeting is not the same thing as employment, but one needs the budget, right, to employ. Dr. Hackett, in your response, you actually talked about over-staffing. So you're sort of speaking to the employment side. Got to have the money to have the employment. And so what I'm mindful of is, some people around this table will remember, Mr. Schindlman, around this time of year, would often say, "The school committee's budget is a fiscal expression of our commitment and our values." And so I'm channeling him right now. He's probably not watching. He's kicking his feet up, I'm sure. But he was really very right. And so I think, Dr. Hackett, to your point, you know, saying we will fund it is a different kind of message. It's a supportive message than saying, "Well, if the interest is there, we'll sort of figure out how to do it." But an angle that I had not considered, which you, I think, just very clearly spoke to, was if we add that extra point two for Mandarin, and we offer it, and like, nobody signs up, that's a helpful data point. However, because kids are taking all these other classes, there may be some students who are not going to be able to continue in Mandarin because of a schedule clash. And if that means it's an extra session, then at the very least, we're supporting those kids who are sort of in that pipeline, which to me is just a both-and proposition that speaks to how we support what still is really a very new initiative. But it's heartwarming to me, because it's, I feel like it's working. And we have to continue to nurture it. So I would strongly support, as I said last night, it's going from a, it's to one hundredths of a percent. It's not quite a rounding error, but not a lot of money in a, you know, $60 million budget. And I think there's a lot of value in including that in the budget, and I would support doing so.
I was, oh.
Oh, I was just going to ask, have we had an issue with students who were, who were interested in, or who wanted to continue, students who are studying Mandarin but weren't able to work it into their schedule? Maybe that's just too granular, but you had kind of alluded to it.
Well, I think statistically, you have a good chance of having an issue, because there's only going to be one period in a day in a six-day cycle that rotates that they can take it. So there are other things competing against that time slot, but I don't know.
But if you had to study a language.
That experience.
Is it? And this doesn't, that doesn't typically happen at ninth grade, just because there's so many sections of everything else they take. So that, there's two sections in ninth grade. So that becomes kind of the anchor in their schedule in English and math, that there's a million sections of, move around that. It does become an issue with the higher grades if students continue, the singletons compete against each other.
But making this full-time won't solve that.
Well, no, because this would be the addition of a Mandarin One class.
Right.
Which would be like ninth graders, so.
But it helps to solve it if we can offer Mandarin One, because we don't have the student interest to do it, then that position then would pick up another section of Mandarin, whatever level that would be at. That's what we would do with it. So I guess my point around that, it's not a wasted resource.
Which is important to clarify.
It is.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Nixon, I, to be clear, I just wanted to make sure that if we were adding something, we weren't adding something that we would then have empty sections for.
Right, no, and I think you asked a good question. I, what I'm saying is, I like, I like the perspective from which Dr. Hackett is saying, it's not a wasted resource. You know, if literally the interest isn't there, that, that's not a, that's going to make Mandarin sort of more available to some kids where you may have a schedule conflict.
Do we have students who want to take more than one language? Do we have an idea of how often that happens? Because you mentioned about if a student switches languages, we're down, but I'd wonder, are there students who take two? And what's, how often does that happen?
You mean, over the four years or concurrently?
Concurrently.
We have students who take it concurrently. It is predominantly an add of Latin to whatever language they came up with.
And if a, sorry?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, and if a student, you alluded to French One being in the handbook. So if a student wanted to start in another language, then do we have an on-ramp for that?
Other than French?
Spanish and Italian.
Well, yeah, Spanish and Italian, I know we do, but I'm talking about French.
Spanish, Italian, and Latin all have a beginner One at the high school, French, and Mandarin enough.
So just listening to this and evolving my thinking a little bit, a lot of our conversation is around sort of the operational logistics of numbers of students and space and all. And a point that I think Mr. Vinalia and Mr. Nixon said that struck me is just around kind of the, you know, the strategic goals of the committee and the, you said it well, the expression of what it is that.
A fiscal expression of our commitment and values.
That was it, yes. But as I was thinking, because I was trying to differentiate also, you know, well, what about French and things? And where this is a program that we're trying to really get established and take root and making a strategic choice, you know, it seems like, and where the cost is relatively low, and then some of the other comments, I think, around capacity building within our faculty and whatnot, that, you know, I think it's something that I would be supportive of, having, given that it's a very small dollar figure, and it aligns with our goals and things, that I think it makes sense, from my point of view, I guess.
Can I make a suggestion or a question? Dr. Hackett, would it be possible to add a small amount? In a $60 million budget, we're sitting here talking about $14,000 or $20,000, if we're talking about French, I'm sorry.
Talking about $14,081.57.
Yeah, and not to other budget priorities that are much more.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Impactful to our budget. So is there a possibility to add a certain amount of money to the world language program with the intention of opening French One and Mandarin One to students who are interested?
So going back to Dr. Ellen Emma's point, we could very well be able to offer French One, depending on what the sign-ups for French, Spanish, Italian, and Latin look like. We may not need another additional staff member to do that, right? So it could be the case that we have sign-ups for French One, and we could figure it out within the schedule. Going back to my earlier comment, what's unique about this particular situation is we have one person, we have 0.8 of a person delivering the entire program.
Right.
So I, you know, if the committee wishes to, I mean, certainly, we would take it, you know, and it's certainly easier with a 1.0. You're not trying to figure out when in the day are they not going to be there, right? So like, for someone's schedule, because it's a rotating schedule with a drop one, every single day, their schedule's different. They might one day be able to come in later, and they might leave in the middle of the day, or they've got, you know, an hour during the middle of the day. So it gives more continuity just to the position alone. But I would just, I would suggest, and I don't think this, I don't think this is in competition for the other priorities that are not in the budget. I see this differently. We have an existing program. Then I would just recommend that you add the $14,500 or whatever it would be for us to bring it to full-time.
So I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve for the FY 24 school budget an amount of $63,445,992, which is the superintendent's recommended budget of $63,431,910, plus an additional $14,082 for expanded instruction in Mandarin at Winchester High School for a net increase of 4.17% over FY 23.
Second.
I would like to open that for discussion. We had two items on the agenda that were priorities of Dr. Hackett's, that he has suggested a way to fund that we have not yet discussed as a committee. Mr. Hopcraft?
Yeah, I agree with the chair's remark earlier that the dollar amount here really isn't significant within the scope of this budget. And so I do think, you know, where it does make an expression of our desires, you know, I do think it makes sense. And I don't think, in my head, I think that's an important conversation we need to have around a larger dollar figure, around some high priorities that are, you know, in this presentation that we should get to soon. But I'm still supportive of this. I think it's the right thing to do for, you know, our intent around the program, and it's really not a significant amount of money.
I guess, Mr. Hopcraft, the motion is, though, is to accept this budget with Mandarin. We haven't yet talked about the other priorities. Do we want to do that before we vote on a total budget amount? It's my question.
Is Dr. Hackett, are you looking for some sort of support around using ESAR funding, which you had spoke to earlier tonight?
That's what I'm asking the committee, whether they want, whether the committee wants to add those, any of the priorities that we actually discussed into the budget? Whether we want to use ESAR to cover these? Whether we want to discuss adding items three, four, and five into the budget as priorities this year? Before we move on and vote this budget?
So my motion was just based on your great presentation about what's in the budget and in the recommended budget, and your acknowledgement of alternative funding sources for other priorities.
Right, I mean, these both are, would be eligible for ESAR funding. As I said earlier in the presentation, I think that we should, and the committee doesn't need to vote on ESAR funding. It's an administrative fund. But I think that if we commit ESAR Two, the remainder of ESAR Two, to covering any kind of gap that we may realize with our special education tuition, which helps to prevent us from putting that money in the budget to compete with other things, understanding that, you know, we could be in a situation where you need to move that back in in FY '25 or '26, but both of these positions would be eligible for ESAR funding, because they are related to pandemic loss of instructional time. Did I say that right, Dr. Ellen Emma? Thank you. you.
And you said that the ESAR 2 funding of 328,000, 329,000 would cover?
It covers, it could cover all or a portion of the special education funding, the differential.
Could, could you clarify again, just, just the, the special education funding priorities 1 and 2? You, you would be able to fund all that with the ESAR funding?
We would be able to fund. We have, we, we have currently 476,000 ESAR 3.
And so, that would cover all, all those three?
That would cover those two positions.
The two position, the two positions first.
Cover those two positions potentially for two years.
Okay, so those two positions are then as much of the, the special ed?
So, ESAR 2, I'm suggesting we use all the balance of ESAR 2, which is the 330,000, for any overages that we experience in sped tuition, hoping that we don't go beyond that as an overage, because then we've got another problem to solve.
Okay.
But that we could use ESAR 3 for these two positions.
And your recommendation is, is not to fund 3, 4, or 5 this year, either through ESAR or through the budget?
Correct. And, and, well, at this point in time.
Right.
Right? Because we may see sped tuition come in at 5%, or that number's not even in that range, and we can cover the entire thing. I mean, there's so much left for us to, to figure out over the course of the next couple of months, because there's so many things that are still up in the air. So, I would suggest not funding beyond those two positions for, out of ESAR for next year. And, but if, in fact, we find that we have the room to do it, because things have broken our way in certain situations, then we would come back to you and have a discussion around those other priorities.
My suggestion and recommendation would be that in your report to Springtown Meeting that comes after we vote tonight, that it would be really important to highlight those positions as being funded through ESAR, because I think that really does remain, I mean, many taxpayers in Winchester want to know, where's the ARPA going? Where's the ESAR going?
Right.
And I, I got a lot of positive feedback through the capital circles and from town meeting members about, you know, your, it was your creative idea to put some ESAR towards our HVAC needs at McCall, which was, you know, really huge. That turned a three-year project into a two-year project.
And just to be clear, in that $476,000 remaining, we are carrying $188,000 for HVAC work at Parkers. That's not covered by the project. So, which is necessary for kids' comfort. So, so that's netted out of that as well. And I think we should, we, we, we need to do that. We need to do that. There's no question. We need to do it.
The 476 is net of the 180, okay.
Yep. Yes, if that's where we go, then I would, I would be clear about the funding source.
And, Dr. Hackett, using ESAR to cover the structural gap in special education, would we be communicating to town meeting and to the finance committee also, that, understanding that that is still creating a structural gap within our, our operating budget of that amount as well, by not adding it into the operating budget?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we are, in this budget, we are adding $284,550 toward what we have identified and talked a lot about last year as a structural gap in, in our district tuition costs. So, we're making incremental gain on bringing that funding back into the operating budget, so we're not relying on one-time funds to do it. What, what this will do for us using ESAR 2 for, potential for whatever this range ends up looking like, I mean, it would be awesome if it was 190 or less, so that then we would have almost a two-year funding source to then kind of feather in, once again, a portion of, of the structural gap into the operating budget, because we cannot continue to rely on that funding. You know, I think we have some confidence that circuit breaker will go up for FY25, based on just the expenditure rates. It could go up by a lot if, if the legislature actually pays attention to what's being recommended by MASC and MAS, which is increasing to 90%. So, I, you know, I feel comfortable with that. I wouldn't, I, I think we need to continue to make some level of gain in the operating budget by, with the special education tuition. So, we would identify that, and then we identify that the remainder, the remainder of what might be would be funded through ESAR.
Right.
Or, or some other source, if it starts docking on 531.
Right, given that, I think, as I mentioned the other night, that the delegation, our delegation has indicated that 8% of that rise in tuition costs is staffing cost.
Imagine.
So, we can at least expect to see, even though they've given us a range of 10 to 14, no less than 8 would be my guess. So, I just, I just want to make sure that we're clear with our audience, with FinCom, with everyone, that by using ESAR to cover these costs, they're going to continue, that a rise in tuition isn't going to go back down the next year.
Yep. And also, just to make a final point around the use of ESAR, we cannot use ESAR, as you well know, but just to be clear with the public, we can't use ESAR to do anything with Lynch Transportation. So, that number's hanging out there without a funding source. So, I just want to make that clear. So, we have, you know, all these pockets, we have potential to cover this, we have two priorities that we're talking about, and then we have, which we have covered to a level, but we do not have funding in the budget currently for wherever we land on Lynch Transportation.
Okay.
We have funding for what we currently pay for Lynch Transportation. We don't have any additional amount.
Any other questions around that? If not, I am happy to take a motion, as Mr. Nixon suggested, but on accept, the acceptance of the entire budget, understanding that we are covering the two priorities this year with one-time funding outside of our budget.
So, Mr. Nixon's motion would stand as is, correct?
Yep, I believe so.
Yeah, it, it's, it's your recommended budget. I'm just clarifying with an additional $14,820 and where that's going.
Right.
So, I think we're good.
Moved and seconded it.
Moved and seconded.
Yep.
We did that?
Yep.
You seconded it.
You seconded it.
I didn't know if I seconded that a while ago, or if I had to second it again.
Mr. Nixon.
I.
Ms. Bollensee.
Aye.
Mr. Brady.
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. And you?
Good work, people. Nicely done. Thank you.
I'd like to make another motion.
Yes.
To move to authorize the superintendent, in collaboration with the Chair, to develop the report for Springtown Meeting to accompany our voted 24 budget, and to make every effort to transmit to the Town Manager by Friday, February 10.
Piece of cake.
Second?
I thought I was going to die on the floor. I was kind of excited, because that just sounds like more work.
I was going to say.
We've done this in years, we've done this in years past. The point is, is, it's, now it's no longer Dr. Hackett's budget, it's the school committee budget. There has to be a report, unless Ms. Bergstrom wants to write the multi-page report. Typically, it has the superintendent to do it. Town Manager has to have her budget out by February 15. I don't know that there's a select board meeting planned for the 13th, or always could be. I think it would be very helpful.
I believe there's one this Friday.
I, I'm sure, yes, but that's still before, I don't, I'm not going to ask you to have it done that early. But, my point was just going to be, I think it would be helpful to the extent it's possible, so I did say make every effort. If that can get there by, by Friday, before the Town Manager's budget is out, that might be useful.
Did you second that, Karen?
I did.
I forget. I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Brady.
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bollensee.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous.
And I'll make another motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, and Mr. Nixon. Mr. Hopcroft, Mr. Brady, Mr. Nixon, Ms. Bollensee, Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. We are adjourned. Nice work, my friends.
Thank you.
All done, Mr. Rowe. Thank you.